Board of Commissioner meeting, 7:00 PM. Ms. Jones, can you do the roll, please?
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Street.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, in our meeting today to talk matters of business, we got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I just want to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to have a really cool video and pictures from the fire department. Several of the commissioners went to a camp there and we learned quite a bit, so, and had a lot of fun and got some good food. So, we appreciate their hospitality and having us out, so we look forward to seeing that tonight. And with that, we'll get started. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number six is citizens' comments.
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition, city events.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We are getting ready for Nature Fest on Saturday, September 23rd at Bowie Park. We currently have over 50 vendor spaces that have been filled, several food vendors, petting zoo, bouncy, bounce houses, live music and much more. Admission to Nature Fest is free. There will be a trunk or treat on Saturday, October 21st at Bowie Park from 3:00 to 6:00 with a movie in the park to follow the trunk or treat. Businesses, organizations and churches are encouraged to sign up for the trunk or treat. They may sign up by contacting Richard Ross at (615) 387-6140. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or anything to add? Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Item A, police report.
Good afternoon. I too learned that Jake was going to have an awesome presentation tonight and it would be multimedia thing, I think laser show, maybe an interpretive dance or something. So, I'm going to concede to that and make mine really brief tonight so we can get to his awesome presentation. You see our staffing for the month. We finally achieved that goal of what we felt like was our staffing levels, 26, through a lot of hard work and your budget approval, we were able to do that. The overtime for the month went up a little bit and that was almost all, that was the July 3rd event. We staffed that completely with most all of our staff and that reflects there on the overtime for the month. The training hours are down for the month of July and that's nothing new. We try to scale back for the month of July because that's a big vacation month. So, aside from a few specialized schools that you see listed there below, we don't plan anything extra for them. We try to let those officers use that avail time and vacation with their families. Next, operational report. A little increase in operational report, the calls for service and self-initiative activity, having those extra officers on the street, getting out there a little busy, see that go up a little bit for the month. Proud to see that also. The rest of the month were up. Domestic's up. DUIs were down a little bit. The drug charges up also. Theft's up. Citation's up. So, that's just busy officers out there uncovering a lot of stuff and getting some work done. That citation there, when it increases, we've always seen historically that that does have some impact on our traffic accidents. Significant drop there, only 16 property damage and one injury, no fatalities. So, we like to see that also. We just want our citizens to know, we're out there trying to suppress that speeding, makes our streets a little safer. We're not out there targeting them for, to buy patrol cars or anything that you hear. That's not what it goes for. So, we're happy to see that also. Touch base again on this Nature Fest. It will be the 23rd. We are going to have a concession tent again there like we did the, a little smaller version like we did the July 3rd event. That will, all the proceeds will go to the shop and cop program. So, excited to see that also. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate every, all of your officers being out at 3rd of July, even if it is some overtime because, I mean, I hear it was almost 20,000 people across our community, so, and no incidents, which was amazing. So, we appreciate all of y'all. Item B, fire report.
And laser show.
Everybody's hyped up my report. There is no laser show or interpretive dancers unless Chief Humphries is in on that, so.
Chief said that was what you would break this type of.
Well, it's not happening. Anyway, my name is Jake and I work for the City of Fairview Fire Department. I'm here tonight to present to you the June, or I'm sorry, the July numbers. I'm going to do the July report and then I'll ask for any questions to close that and then I'll segue into the commissioner camp if that's all right with you all. So, starting off, we had 126 calls for the month of July. That's down just a little bit from the previous year. I will say that I did, I ran the numbers today. We're still about 100 calls ahead of where we were last year, even though we're down just in the month of July, we're still 100 runs up. We had 23 overlapping incidents as we talked about generally every month. That's where both crews are out on calls. We had two incidents where fire was extinguished, one passenger vehicle fire, and then it says a rubbish fire. It was really a pallet on I-40. That was the two fires that we had to extinguish. We also removed one person from a vehicle with a hydraulic rescue tools, tools many of you got to play with at commissioner camp, which I'll talk more about later. Six mutual aid or automatic mutual aid runs where we go help surrounding jurisdictions. Our response time was up from the previous month at 5:36 and you'll see a significant jump in our time operating on scene. The way that, reason that would be for is we created an incident for the July 3rd medical standby. We were there for a long duration, so our instant time operating on scene average is going to be up for, just for the month of July. And then the last little stat that I have on there, we did 15 treat and releases. That's Band-Aids, scraped knees, ice packs, things of that nature during the event. That's why we have the trailer, that's why we're there during the event, providing that type of assistance. Keith will flip the slide. This is that call breakdown of what those 126 calls were. Predominantly, again, medical leads the way, 76 percent, closely followed by the rest of the breakdown. Just a quick picture of that vehicle after we removed those doors to remove that passenger. Quick heat map of where those calls were located. Again, we see a lot in the I-40, 96 corridor and then again toward the center of town. Keith? Real quick breakdown of the fire prevention division and the fire marshal, what he's been up to in the last month. 35 fire and life safety inspections, inspections where he goes to local businesses. Again, minor corrective actions were found in those. His nine plan reviews that goes through the planning department. He does his part whenever plans for projects come through. You'll see 12 food truck inspections. Well, he was up here July 3rd inspecting the food trucks. That's why that number is increased. Fire protection systems test, whenever an occupancy has a fire alarm, a hood, a sprinkler system, that's what he's out there doing. And then again, he's still working on geolocating GPS coordinate, coordinates on all of our fire hydrants. Again, we say this every month about smoke alarms in their homes. If residents in the city limits find themselves in need of smoke alarms in their homes, give us a call at our business line, (615) 799-3473, and we can schedule time with the fire marshal to have them out. This kind of is the last slide on the fire department's report. It's July training. We are still middle of the road. It's hot for us, so 475 hours of training in the month of July. A lot of it in the company category, some of it in our dailies and then the incentive category as well. We sent two members down to the Tennessee Fire Academy to complete their rope rescue class. And then we, through a partnership with codes and planning, were able to work at a, and do some training at a house that's slated for demolition. It's noted here as an acquired structure. We acquired it to use for training. The city did not purchase that property. It's an acquired structure. It's the term that we use in the fire department. So, we did a lot of scenario-based, realistic, live training and there's just some pictures from where we were able to do there. Like I talked about, that kind of ends the July month report. Is there any questions on July specifically?
Tom, you know whose house that was? Irvine Cuddingham. Retired city employee.
We can only see a door and a sliding glass door and a window.
Only put up the good pictures. All right, Keith. So, segueing into commissioner camp, as you all are most likely aware, we had you all down for a fun night at the fire station and we got to learn a lot of, a lot of, a lot of different things about what it takes and what we do at the Fairview Fire Department. These are just some of the pictures from when the sun was still up that I was able to get, y'all having, learning about and then extricating on the vehicle that we were able to get as a training aid. Had a great time with you all down. Just a bunch of pictures of extricating on a, on a training vehicle, using the tools, getting your hands dirty, feeling what our turnout gear felt like and things of that nature. Keith? We kind of segued a little bit and each subdivision of the fire department had a couple minutes to talk about what it is we do. I'm going to talk about what I do first. This is the kind of the headlight of the training divisions thing. So, I did a quick video of the new training tower, of a fire that we lit in there for training and it kind of replicates what a live fire environment can be. There's some notes in there, like we talked about what, what it looks like inside of a fire. Not all fires are the same. This is a training fire, so take that for a grain of salt. But, as Keith's got it going here for us, we've got a fire in the.
That's me in the front, right, right up there.
This is a fire in our training tower that we were able to acquire through our budgeting process. Talks about, we've got a fire, a training fire set and the fire's going to grow in this compartment and it's going to start to spill out across the ceiling. And this is why you have a fire department. Firefighters go inside, they'll apply water, they'll put the fire out. If they come across any victims that may be still inside there, they remove those victims. But, for those who get motion sickness, you're probably, you may get that. This is a camera, it's called a helmet camera. It's on my fire helmet and that's what you're watching right now. Very short. So, we're starting to see the fire. It's grown up to the ceiling. It starts to roll across the ceiling. It's, the technical term is called rollover. Rolls out across the ceiling. You start to see fingers of fire. It's almost over.
What was the temperature?
You won't be able to hear it in here, but at the ceiling, it's probably 1,200 and then at our head level, it's anywhere from 250 to 300 degrees. Warm, for lack of a better term. And that's why we wear our turnout gear. It helps protect us from these warm environments. And really, all that gear does is provide us time. It's not a superhero suit. It's just like your oven mitt. If you take a sheet of cookies out, if you hold that tray too long, you're still going to get warm on your hand. Same thing with our gear. It's not a superhuman suit, just buys us time. Keith, if you'll hit the next slide, that'd be great. So, the fire prevention division did a little bit on their thing. This is the comparison of a legacy room versus a modern furnished, furnished room and time to flash over. Flash over is a term in our world, the fire service world, when a room goes to full room involvement. It's fire from floor to ceiling, wall to wall, spilling out of any and all openings. So, we talked about what derives compartments or rooms to go to flash over and that's mainly fuel and the availability of oxygen. So, Keith, if you can get the video to play, I'll kind of walk it through. It's a couple minute long video, again, no audio. It's kind of speak a little bit for itself. On one side, we'll see what they call legacy furnishings, which is, you know, natural furnishings, cotton, wool, wood. And then we'll see synthetic, in the synthetic room or the modern versions, we're talking about solidified gasolines, the plastics, modern furnishing. So, we're going to see a comparison. They're going to start the fire at the same time and we're going to see how long it takes for each room to go to full room involvement. And this is why response time in our world, the fire department's world, is so important is it takes time for us to get the call, to get on the road to the call, drive to the call, arrive at the call and then start to operate at the call. You'll see that on the natural side, it actually starts to take off a little bit quicker, but the synthetic side or the modern side is going to catch up fairly quickly. Again, we're two and a half minutes in and if you remember, if we go month to month, every, every month, I'm talking about five and a half minutes of response time. We're already behind the ball on response time. Most likely, the room on the right, even if you are on the floor, is unsurvivable and then it will, it will transition to total room involvement, also known as flash over here very shortly.
And mostly, it's because of the toxins that come from like the carpets and the materials and stuff that when it gets in your lungs, you're done, right?
Correct, correct. And those fuels also produce fuel. Smoke is fuel. You know, again, solidified gasoline, we just get these, these fuels that are gaseous or vapor state and they just burn readily. This video fast forwards a little bit into time. We're now 26 minutes into the natural or the older furnishings. Again, that time would have been time for a fire department to respond. Houses aren't built or furnished the same as they used to be anymore. So, this video is almost over. So, a quick recap of what we saw on that video. So, with that, with response times, modern furnishings, it's important that all of us, citizens, every person in the United States does things and takes action to protect themselves in the event of fire. One thing that they can do, as we can take a moment to plug fire prevention here, is to close before you doze. Close your bedroom door, create barriers between yourself and places where fires could start or could, could, could be in your homes. One way to do that is to close your bedroom doors. If you look at the pictures that we've got up here, a difference between a door closed and a door not closed in a home fire could be a difference of 900 degrees. An open door at room could be at 1,000 degrees like we talked about earlier. Closing that door and creating a barrier between yourself and the fire reduces that temperature inside the room that you're in to something that's survivable. The picture, it's going to be on the upper left, is an exterior picture of the same type of concept. The door on the far right, there's a door that was opened, fire was able to get into that room. The door on, I'm sorry, the room on the more left side, the bedroom door was closed, creating that barrier in a survivable space. So, we had a request to put up some pictures about close before you doze and talk about how important it really can be. Keith? And this is kind of our summary slide that we had at commissioner camp, but it still speaks volumes. We're super thankful for our residents, our elected officials and our city staff for all, all of it that you let us, are able to let us do to help be the great fire department that we are and service to our city. So, is there any questions specifically about commissioner camp that I could help answer?
So, if someone's in a room that the door is closed, how do they assess if fire is right outside the door?
Okay, great question. So, the presence of any smoke that may be seeping around the door, either around the door itself or at the bottom of the door. Check the doorknob for heat, see if it's hot. You could quickly open the door and shut it back if you needed to. But definitely before I went and opened the door, I would check the presence of heat and any sort of signs of smoke.
And if that room happens to be a room that the, there's a window, but it's say 20 feet off the ground, explain what would be a good idea to, if you need to escape from that window?
Sure. One thing that I would, what I would stress is a concept called Edith, which is exit drills in the home. Have a plan in place before a fire happens. So, that could involve, there are escape, commercially made escape ladders for properties or homes or windows and rooms that are above grade. The fire department, I will say, is trained in our ground ladders to help affect rescues above the, above ground ladder, but ground level, but it's still important that you can affect your own rescue. So, there's commercially made ladders and having two ways out of a, of a room or a house is also a great idea as well.
Jake?
Yes.
I know when we went into the training facility ourselves, it was very instrumental in letting us know there, but at the end, y'all responded with the fire, fire engine and then your officers went into, they went down low like crawling into the fire with the water hose. How extensively was that heated up?
That specific night?
Yeah.
Not anywhere close to what I talked about earlier. We were doing a demonstration that night.
Right, yeah.
And more of a simulation. It was warm. I don't have a temperature reading of what that was that night, but they're trained if they can't see their feet or if it's warm conditions to get underneath that smoke layer and it's just kind of a result of training, you have to get low.
So, that's, that's the general procedures to go in when they see a certain, certain phase of the fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jake.
Also, one other thing that my family does is we have a plan where if the house is on fire, that we meet at the mailbox. So, that way, if, we all know to meet at the mailbox, so we're not, we know if someone's not out of the house. And how do y'all handle pets?
Are you asking if we would go and rescue a pet?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We would, we would go and do the best that we can to rescue a pet.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming out and presenting all of that, really good information.
Yes, ma'am.
Even though we didn't get a laser show.
Oh, and I did want to point out, I was just joking, Jake is very conscientious about keeping everyone safe. I was not in that building. Item 8C, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just want to report fiscal year '23 is reconciled. We have been very busy preparing for the audit, which is going to be the last week in August. And that is, other than day to day, that's been pretty much the focus of administration. Thank you.
Any questions of the city manager? All right. Item 9, consent agenda. A, minutes from August 3rd, 2023, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 9 passes 5-0. Item 10, old business. We have no old business tonight. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 53-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners supporting the Fairview Police Department participation in the Tennessee Law Enforcement Hiring Training and Recruitment Grant Program. Chief Humphries.
This is another element of Governor Lee's attempt to kind of shore up some things in the public safety areas. The, as you know, we addressed the board before about raising our salaries because the challenge of hiring, retention. Governor Lee's has seen that across the state and he's done several grants that help departments out and this one is one of those. And this one is in attempt to attract new officers, which is, is hard to get nowadays. Younger people are just not wanting in this, in this profession. It's a grant that offers them a bonus and the retention side of that is paid out over three years, so they would have to stay to receive that. They can't jump to another department because it would just nullify it at that point. And it's attempt to capture officers that have been law enforcement officers, left the profession for one year and get them back into the fold. For us, it's not a matching grant. It's nothing but money in, money out. You'll see in the packet there, it's up to, we were awarded up to, will be awarded up to $200,000. I don't foresee that we'll ever, you know, reach that goal. If we do, we've had a lot of turnover. We've grown so much that we've hired a lot of staff. So, it really is, once it's approved, we have no one now that, that is eligible for that would be any new hires after September the 1st. And if they come in, we would simply submit that to the state. They would send that money in and we would pay the bonus out to the officer. So, it's really just money in, money out, it's nothing, no tax dollars to the City of Fairview.
Move for approval.
Any questions or discussion, chief, from Chief Humphries?
Laser show.
I was just, I was told that was all fire department today, so.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item number 12 is roundtable with the mayor and commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll come back to what I come with last meeting regarding the committee for the Water and Sewer Department. See if y'all possibly see my viewpoint on that. And I have three volunteers that's willing to give up their time. And the reason I'm asking for volunteers is we have a lot to do as a commissioner and they're willing to take their time up to attend the meetings one at a time. Other than the first meeting, I will go with them on the first meeting. And I need y'all's permission to move forward with making, having a resolution drawn up. So, that's what my goal is for, for that right now.
Are you able to tell us who your?
I am.
Okay.
Mr. Mobley's in here, Amor Mobley, Mr. Fred Rusenberger, I believe is pronounced, and Mike Stanley. And they've all agreed to be a part of that committee.
And Commissioner Hall, what do you foresee their duties to be?
Well, the main thing is to go, once we get the first meeting over with and I introduce them to the board, their board at the Water Authority, is to come back and let, let this board know what, what transpired there. But eventually, I would like to see if there's any way that we could possibly talk them into letting us have a member, a voting member on their board. I know that's been a long drawn out thing for years, but it's, the way I see it, you should never quit trying to have a representation from Fairview because we are a part of their system and I think we should be allowed to at least have a voting member.
And do you believe that voting member will be one of the people that you are sending from the committee? If that were to happen?
I believe that would be wise to do so. I think these gentlemen have got Fairview at heart and they would, would do a good
Mr. Carter, how would we move forward with that?
I think it would be in the form of a, a task force. Need to pass a resolution creating it and how the, when these would work and how long they would serve. I mean, I guess the question is, do we want it to be a full committee that's, it's going to continue in existence for now on? You know, where we have terms and we need to establish that or is it a task force where once they complete the task, then it's complete? It sounds to me more like a task force, which case, I think we could create it by resolution and the BOC would appoint however many members to that task force and then they would have a mission, which is, which is to lobby the Water District for a seat. I think that would be the way to do it. Ms. Jones can prepare a resolution. I can help her with that and we can put it on the next agenda. help her with that, and we can put it on the next agenda, and we can fill in the blanks at the meeting by nomination. And so Commissioner Hall, I think, has three members that are ready to go, but some of the rest of you may have, want to make a nomination of your own to appoint, or you could just go with your halls if that's all agreeable. So I think that's the way it would work. Best work. What would you want to call the task force, Commissioner Hall? Water?
Water.
Water sewer? Task force. And how many members? Are we talking three members?
Three members.
So three members, so that would be in the whereas statement, and that the task would be to lobby the Dixon County Water District for a seat, from a, someone from the City of Fairview. And then we would have three members, and that would be their task. And they wouldn't rise to a full committee, it would just be a task, a task force. So once they complete their mission, if they complete their mission, then it wouldn't be necessary anymore, unlike a committee, which is, continues over time, long time.
So I would see if the Water and Dixon Water Authority agrees and at some point brings on a member to the board, then we can move forward that way with that board member reporting back to us.
Or just disagrees and say they will never do it, that we can, they'll have completed their work to find out if it's a possibility. So I'll help Ms. Jones in completing that resolution and getting on your agenda for next time.
Let me ask this, if you don't mind. Even if we can't get the board member right off the bat, I would still like to continue it for a while. You put 12 months on it if you want to.
Oh, I think that's, I don't think we have to put a time limit on it, it's just-
To continue to let them go and see what's happening this month, or what their plans for next month are, and this type of thing, just to come back and briefly, just give us a brief synopsis of what the meeting was about.
I think it could be indefinite. And by long-term, I just mean typically, when we establish a committee, they're expected to have regular meetings, and there's an appointment process, and there's a lot more meat to creating it. You know, this, we're gonna create by resolution, appoint three members, and then go forward, and hopefully they're successful. But even if they're not, and the answer is just no, we'll know that. And then you could dissolve the task force at any time. And if at some point you feel like it should be more than a task force, we could transition it from a task force to a full committee with seats and appointments and the whole bit. But I think that's the natural place to start here, from what I understand about the issue and the desired outcome.
I believe that'll work.
We'll do that. I'll work with Ms. Jones, and she'll take a stab at it first, and then I'll work on it, and then she can correct my errors, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Is that all? Commissioner Hall?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Commissioner Fisher Street?
Yes, ma'am. First, I want to say that it's been my honor and privilege to serve as a commissioner. Since being elected to the Fairview BOC, I feel I have done my job with compassion, always keeping in mind the requests and needs of the citizens. I love our city and only want to make it better. Coming into this position, I didn't know exactly what to expect from the board members. However, at the very least, I expected us to treat one another with respect and integrity, even when we had a difference of opinion. Unfortunately, that has not been the case. Instead, I've been bullied by the mayor, other board members, and the city attorney. I've been attacked personally and been made to seem as if I have negative intentions, all of which cannot be farther from the truth. I try to look away, but I cannot in good faith continue to be a part of something that I feel is doing so much more harm than good. I feel I've been doing my job based on the facts presented, the law, and most importantly, with compassion for the people of Fairview. At this point in time, I feel I can better serve the best interest of Fairview by working alongside the citizens advocating for their wants and needs. For my family in Fairview, I resign as of the end of this meeting from the Fairview Board of Commissioners. I want to thank the people for their support and opportunity to serve.
Okay. Vice Mayor Butler?
Good morning, Mayor.
Okay, so last meeting, we had a group of wonderful parents, coaches, players from the Little League World Series, and it just lit up the room. It was so exciting to see them be so excited to be here, and we were able to honor them and their accomplishments. What I would like to say is that if there are any groups, teams, organizations that have anything that they accomplish, I would love for them to let us know, so that we can put them on the agenda under awards and recognition, so that we can always let them know how proud we are of them. So, you know, we can't, as a board, always know what's going, you know, on in different leagues and organizations in our communities, so I encourage anyone to reach out. My personal cellphone number is everywhere, online, Facebook, Citi, everything. You can give me a caller. I'm sure any of the other commissioners would be happy to facilitate something like that. But I just, that, it was electric last meeting, and I just really want us to acknowledge and, you know, just let our community know that we want to, you know, give recognition to the different accomplishments of our young people. Also, I made a statement last week. I messed up, I said that Vice Mayor Butler was the Vice President of, help me, Mr. Commissioner Johnson?
Fairview Recreation.
Okay, so actually, Vice Mayor Butler was out at the Little League World Series keeping the books all week, and he did an awesome job. And Commissioner Johnson was actually an umpire the entire week. But also, when I said that, I said Vice Mayor Butler is the Vice President of the Rec Association. It's actually Commissioner Johnson that's the Vice President of the Rec Association, and he is over all of the umpires. So I just wanted to give a little recognition to some of our board members that actually are involved and were involved all week in that World Series, because it was a great undertaking, it took a lot of volunteers, and, you know, it was, it just turned out amazing. So just remember, if you have anything that you'd like, you know, to be recognized, small or large, we want you to come here and be a part of our meeting, so that we can recognize you publicly, because we are televised and Facebook Live, you can go and replay the meetings where you can see, you know, who's been awarded and recognized. Also, the last thing I have is, on August 31st, this month is a month with a fifth Thursday, please remember that we have a town hall. We want everyone to come out, we'd love to hear from you. It's a relaxed time where we can just talk back and forth about concerns and issues, and if you have anything that you'd like to, you know, bring that's, you know, something happy and exciting that's happened. So it's just 7:00 next Thursday here at City Hall for our town hall meeting. And as I always say, please keep Fairview beautiful, let's pick up trash and not throw it out. And that's all I have for tonight. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, before we adjourn-
Yes. I'm sorry, two weeks from tonight is August 31st.
It's been brought to my attention that we've been having some email difficulties, and when I send emails, some or all of you may not be getting them. Mr. Hall gave me an alternative email that I've used in the past before he got his city email set up, so I think I have him straight. Mr. Butler says that he does receive my emails. I think you had told me last week that you aren't receiving any emails on any of the-
My texts and emails is down right now.
So I talked to Mr. Doherty about that, and Mr. Johnson's having the same problem. So I'll use the alternative email for Mr. Johnson. Mayor, I don't think I have any other email from you other than your Fairview emails. If you have another email so I can communicate when I need to, that would be great if you could get that to Mr. Doherty or text it to me or whatever. But Mr. Doherty says that IT will be working on resolving those issues. We really need to resolve those issues, because it's best not to send business emails to your personal account, because it just causes confusion about what's business and what's personal, and it's just much, much easier, the best practice, to have all of your city items segregated. To the extent that you mix them, then it becomes much more complicated, and it's just not a good practice. But in the meantime, we'll have to do that, but if we can get this issue corrected, certainly our IT people hopefully can get that done. It shouldn't be too bad of a fix.
I will be here in the morning with IT getting mine fixed.
Okay.
And I'll get mine dropped off.
Perfect. And then, okay, sounds good, Commissioner Hall. And I didn't mean to delay the meeting, but I wanted to make sure that we're on the same page with communication, because that's the, that's not good for anybody to have bad communication. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So move?
We're adjourned. Thank you.